This call is recorded, so if you participate in the call, you're giving your permission to be recorded. We just want to remind everybody of that. And we'll start with roll call.
Bill Williams Plonter.
President.
Bill Giffens.
Here.
Tini Monroe.
Here.
Sally O'Charney.
Here.
Rich West.
President.
The flag here still?
No. Yeah, it's got it.
Oh, okay. Wayne has it. Okay.
We'll skip that.
We'll skip. All right. Okay. First on the agenda is approval of minutes from the previous meeting.
We have approval of the minutes from the November 24th regular meeting minutes.
Remove.
Okay, Rich first, Sally second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. Next on the agenda, we have the third reading of ordinance 2020-012, 2021 salary ordinance. We've already passed this on the first reads. Are there any questions or discussion points or anything new to bring up?
Back to the first segment.
Yes.
Jeff, please, the MS is here.
Okay.
Jeff.
Okay.
If you're being able to read this and then maybe we can push the third reading to next week so that if there are any changes, that we're not doing it on the fly. I'd rather be able to make the changes in the ordinance and then
Okay.
how you see it before it's approved.
Okay. Jeff, I know you've already communicated with council on email, but do you want to go ahead and come up and summarize and?
Actually, can I ask? Marlene, I think, wanted to be here, and she had a 6:00 meeting. Could we
Okay.
come back to it maybe in a few minutes?
Yeah, we can do that.
If that's okay.
That way she gets here in time.
Yeah. She said probably 6:45, so we could skip down and come back to it.
All right. Sorry, Jeff. Hold that thought. All right. Let's move on to stormwater rate study update.
So I've got just a little update for you. I sent about a one-page summary of some recommended changes. Bob and I went through it and went through the original master plan for utilities that the town did about a decade ago. And kind of looking through that and the study that Baker Tilly provided for us, our recommendation was to remove that park project that was listed at $75,000 and its place put in a line item for $40,000 for existing extensions and a $10,000 system maintenance line item. And hopefully that would bring down our rate to about $4 per unit. And we could phase that then over three phases, as Jeff suggested. So that would be, you know, maybe two years now that we'd be able to do that.
Okay. So and that's just, this is just on the stormwater side?
This is just for stormwater. Yeah.
Okay.
And so my suggestion would be that if everyone's comfortable with that, I'll send those recommendations to Jeff and have him update the study. And then I'll bring back those hard numbers once
Okay.
once he's kind of updated the study with that capital.
Can you say what that $10,000 was again, Jonathan?
System maintenance.
Okay.
Are you comfortable with the park?
Um, I mean, it's, the issue is the sidewalk really needs done. The stormwater isn't as urgent, but I don't want to do the other.
So digging up the sidewalk.
And I was fine with it on there. And Bob's case that he made was just that, you know, for most stormwater projects, we try to focus on ones that impact multiple parcels, not just one. And that this would really just be focusing on the sidewalk and not the park parcel. You know, it, most of what's going to come through there is what's around the building already. You know, there'll be some runoff from Lakeford Drive, but it's most here on the, on the site already.
So the $40,000 is not going to be part of this?
Um, I guess that would be up to council. That's not what he would recommend. And yeah.
He was just sort of redefining?
No, no, no.
Well, if we ever do that full project with the sidewalk, we could maybe budget from the sidewalk program, you know, to do it as a sidewalk project along with a stormwater project that we could certainly address it at the right time. Does anyone have any questions or issues with Jonathan having updated them with those numbers coming back to us with the, how that would affect the rates later? Okay, great. All right. Next, we have the regional stellar plan update. I just want to let you know that Friday, we have a quarterly meeting with Okra. They did do the last quarterly meeting with us. So this has been a while since we've had one with them. As part of that process, we do a quarterly newsletter update, kind of like what Jonathan does with Culver Stellar. So that newsletter has come out. It's with the Crossroads team. It goes to Okra tomorrow. We'll post that on the Marshall County Crossroads website if you all want to look at that. It has an update by community. So you can see where some of the communities are at, if you would like. The biggies right now are bringing a main street. As you guys know, they've had an indot grant to do their main street. And part of the stellar plan was we're doing the streetscape project along with that. So that one's probably the furthest along construction-wise. But also Argus Pond Park is pretty far along with some design work on doing that project. And there's some other things in there that you might be interested in. Then one of the biggies too is one of the complementary projects was the permanent support housing implement adds 18 minutes of housing. That one's just had a ribbon cutting for construction and it's underway. That happened to be a complementary project in the plan. But if you have any questions on that, check it out on the website. Any other updates, Jonathan?
Yeah, just on our project. The only one that we have that's already moving forward was the grant from indot for Slaton Jefferson Street Trail. And we have received a contract proposal from Troy Group. Bob Porter, myself, and Jim have been going over that and making some suggested changes. And I should have a final draft to present for your approval at the next meeting.
Great.
And thanks, Jim, for all his, all his notes on that. We're going to take care of it.
Okay. Next, then, we have renewed emergency declaration. I think you guys probably saw on the news that the county just renewed their emergency declaration. We do this weekly. I did it last week. I thought the council could approve renewing ours this week. Same one we talked about at our last meeting to coincide with what's going on at the county level. Do I have a motion to approve of renewing our emergency declaration?
Remove. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Excuse me. Was that a motion to ratify the emergency declaration that hadn't been acted on by the council or to approve one going forward?
It's, it's the one to ratify the support of the county one, or renewing our affirmation of that and our local emergency declaration.
Okay, so. I'm sorry.
Kind of like the last meeting, Jim, where we were just affirming the county's
Okay, that's fine.
emergency declaration and ordinance. So reaffirming that, but also our local declaration of emergency because we had done that at the last meeting, just so we can keep our policies in place as well.
Thanks for the clarification. I just was wanting to make sure I understood correctly and Karen would get it correct, so.
Sure thing. All right. If council is all right with it, I know that we have a special guest on the line with Senator Donato attending our meeting today. And she would love to speak with us. And originally, we were going to put that under citizen input, but I thought we would insert it here before we do our stellar plan update and our town reports. Is that all right with everyone?
Good.
All right. We'll turn it over to you, Senator Donato.
Thank you very much. I'm going to turn my camera on and try it. If I freeze, I'll just have to shut it off. They are in the process of putting fiber in my area, and there's a trailer behind me across the road. So I know they're working on it right now. So if I freeze, I'll shut off my camera, okay?
Sure thing.
First of all, I just want to thank you for the invitation. I'm very excited to get to know a little bit more about Culver. I was there a little over a year ago and saw your Pathway Connections progress that was going on within Donato, and that was very exciting. And this is just the second time that I've been able to be with Culver. There was a town hall in January, I believe. There was a horrible ice storm that day. I remember that. And there was a representative from Culver at that town hall, but I haven't had a lot of interaction. So very excited to, to be invited and look forward with working with all of you in the future. My LA was able to reach out to a few of you and got a few questions. So I have kind of done a summary of the questions that he received. And then you can feel free to interrupt me and join in on anything that maybe he would want to add or be a little different. One of the first things that I wanted to discuss is TIF. Was that a question from someone? The, the, the Indiana School Board Association is looking at an agenda for the 2021 session about possibly reforming the TIF language a bit. And I was on the Cass County Council for seven years. So I have enough TIF knowledge to just be completely dangerous, probably. And I am of the opinion currently that that is a local decision and we need to keep that as local as possible. So as of this point, I looked over their 2021 agenda. I am, I can't say that what they're proposing is probably smart for a lot of my district, but I will be reaching out to you when that bill comes, if it comes, to see what your opinion is. But I would welcome any comments that you have on that.
Thank you. This is Jonathan Lice, the town manager. I think that one was probably from me, so thank you. Yeah, if we do see something come forward, I'd be happy to reach out. I think it's always important to see how it actually affects each community, and I know each one's a little different, so appreciate that.
That is very true. I realize that the school board wants to be involved, and that makes total sense. But I, it has to be a case by case and a district by district. If you're not aware, I am, I represent Cass County, Miami County, and Fulton County in completion, and then portions of Carroll, Caziasco, and Marshall. So I have a pretty diverse region as far as different schools, different, different languages, different nationalities, different religions. It's a pretty diverse culture that I deal with. So I really think it's important that we take that case by case. The second topic was the CARES Act funding. Someone had a comment about that. He didn't tell me who commented. He just gave me the topics. So does someone have a comment on the CARES Act funding?
Anyone here?
That might have also been me. This is Jonathan again. And I think my only comment on that was a thank you for how the state handled it. I really appreciate the flexibility that was given as it went on. And we did have a lot of expenses in our emergency services this year that were not predicted at the beginning of the year, and we'll be having more discussions on that in a few minutes. So it was very helpful this year. And we had a new officer hired who, his training was delayed, and that added some expenses, so it was really appreciated.
All right. Well, good. I'm glad that it's worked out well for you. I think it worked out for a lot of districts. I don't believe that Culver has a lot of broadband issues. It seemed with your stellar, I read a little bit of your stellar application, and it looked like you were pretty well set. I'm not sure overall in the county if it is that good of broadband there, but a lot of my district is underserved. So that's a huge topic for me and economic development. That's a huge topic in my district. But you look like you're, you're pretty set as far as that goes. Other topics for economic development. I know that you're wanting to, you're doing a great job with your regional stellar and your stellar, from what I can see on the internet, that it's coming along very nicely. And I'm very proud of what all you're doing, that it's just remarkable how well you all work together. And you're, I love to come to the north end of the district, to be very honest. I've been to Argus seven times, I think, already, and just, just amazed at what's going on in Marshall County as a whole. So did someone have a question about economic development?
Any questions, guys?
We've, we've recently had some economic development meetings with a consultant just to sort of come up with a vision and a plan of how to work better as a community, but also with some of our regional partners.
Okay.
So that's kind of a hot topic right now in Culver, and maybe why we don't have questions, because we're kind of in the midst of it. But we'll happily invite you to any of the follow-up activity taking place with that.
Okay. Just a quick thing I wanted to let you know that just came out yesterday. On the Main Street programs and broadband readiness, next level connections, there is a third phase of the COVID response program opened up yesterday. This program is designed to help non-entitlement and entitlement local units of government up to $250,000. So if that's something that would work into your current agenda, I just wanted to let you be aware of that.
Yeah, great. Thank you. I think, and that's through Okra. I was going to ask, she shared with council and her council issues that I checked with Okra because you know how the county did a $250,000 grant under COVID with Okra for small businesses? That does not prevent us from applying for this third round. So Culver's going to apply to do the same thing. So we'll keep you up to date on that as well.
And if I might jump in, I was reported at the commissioners' meeting on Monday that 24 applicants had already been, or applications have been submitted for that 250 grand and through the ED, $7,500. You can see that money's being chewed up pretty quick. So if Culver is interested, that would be great.
Yeah. Thank you, Jim.
Senator, I have you. This is real, a little bit off topic, but do they know for sure how many vaccines the state of Indiana may get and your may get? And have you seen plans for rollout of vaccinations?
I have not seen it on a state side, no. I'm sorry. I do know that the hospitals are preparing. Lafayette has their stations set up to administer the vaccinations, and I think that's pretty much statewide. Everything's prepared that way, but I don't know what our number will be or who will be first.
Okay.
And then the last thing that I was just going to run through is a couple bills that I'm working on. It's actually one of, one of your area, the conservancy districts that will encompass the town of Culver. It's an entity that you brought to me for legislation. So it's, the bill essentially allows conservancy districts to meet virtually. It follows the framework of the open door law. The final version is attached, and I can send that to you if you would like to take a look at that. It goes in tomorrow. So just wanted to say thank you for bringing that legislation to me. I appreciate that, and I'm glad that we were able to get that set up and bill. And the second bill that I'm working on, that I'm pretty passionate about, is a civil litigation. It is for, I'll call it romantic relationships, not allowing any more litigation to be brought in a romantic relationship after that has possibly ended to create more, more legal fees than are what are completely necessary. And it's a protection for the child. And then if you have any other questions, that's kind of my summary.
Thank you, Senator. Any questions, council, or?
Jonathan, did you get your question answered?
I did, yes. Thank you.
And Karen, did you get?
Yeah. Take this off. Can you hear me now?
Yeah, I can hear you. I'm going to turn my camera off because you were cutting out. So go ahead and say it again, please. I'm sorry.
Well, that's okay. So on your bill for the conservancy districts, do you see that that might be something that would work well to carry over to town facilities and towns as far as virtual meetings? I know Senator Rogers also has a bill that she's trying to carry to allow meetings like what we're having this evening to continue past the pandemic period.
Um, I mean, it is a possibility. Mine is already in its final phase, so that would be added later. It could be, it could be added through amendments or possibly, I haven't seen Senator Rogers' bill, so I don't know what that looks like. I do apologize about that.
That's okay.
But at that point, it could be added possibly. We could take a look at it.
Okay. I think she's just allowing for virtual meetings and then also having electronic signatures be allowed as well.
Yes. That, unfortunately, we are in a different world right now, and we're having to do a lot of changing in that manner just to survive.
That was another one of my questions, just for our knowledge. How is the upcoming session going to look different? A lot of people in the state house isn't that large where you're meeting, so.
Right. They're, they're moving the, the house over to the convention center. So that's going to take out a bulk of the legislators, and they can go through the tunnels, and they'll be doing their, all of their voting and everything over there. The Senate has split, and we are 40, yeah, no, 30 down on the floor and 20 up in the gallery to make it possible for us to social distance. And I happen to be one of them up in the gallery. And so I, I am going fourth floor to fourth floor. They have a way that they want us to enter and exit. So we're just trying to keep our flow in the correct way to try to, to lower any chances and separate social distance. The, all of the committees are going to be held with just the committee members at the Senate floor and any other, any, any other members or anything that would want to watch, they've got to do it virtually. And if you're a witness, you're going to be in a different room on a different floor. So I'm not sure how the lobbying in the hallway is going to work at this point, but I was on a Farm Bureau meeting last night, and they were discussing probably using Zoom or text or email to communicate back and forth. So it's still in the works, but it's, we're doing the best we can with it.
Sure.
I think we're all fine.
We can relate to that.
And I just have one other question. Just, I know you said economic development, and it sounds like children are a high priority on your list. What are some of your other legislative priorities or your interests?
My highest interest is education, and I have requested to be. I don't know, the committees I'll be on yet. I did request education, and I requested utilities because, of course, broadband in most of my district is, is a huge, huge area of concern. So those are, those are my first two priorities.
Thank you.
Great. Good questions, Karen. Good answers. Anybody else have questions or topics? Well, thank you, Senator Donato, for joining us and for answering all the questions and for letting us put you on the spot. We appreciate time and your work.
If it's okay with you, I'd really like to listen to the committees so that I just kind of know what's going on in Culver, and I'm here to learn, so.
Certainly.
That would be okay? Okay. I'm going to shut my, I'll shut everything off, so you won't hear anything from me, but I am interested in learning more about Culver, so.
Welcome to the ground. We, we usually do have a good online contingency and a very active volunteer base in Culver. So we kind of like the virtual meetings. It allows our public to stay involved, and, and we have a public that likes to be involved. So we appreciate those, the ability to let people participate still.
Sure, sure. And I did find your calendar today, so maybe I can continue to be a participant, so.
Great.
Thank you.
So we'll circle back since Marlene's joined us. Hi, Marlene. Good to see you. We had, early in the agenda was the reading for the salary ordinance, Marlene. And I know that Jeff wanted to get back in touch with council and you as well before we talk about passing on third read. So, but we wanted to wait till you got here before we had Jeff speak. Someone circle back to that agenda item and let Jeff go ahead and speak now.
Well, I thank you all for allowing me to come in. I'm sorry for it being short and over. I'm sorry it's last minute. Everything I've done these last several months have been last minute or behind the, behind the times. And I'm, I'm sorry about that, but some of this stuff is just unfortunate. I sent you all an email several days ago. And I apologize for the lateness of it there. It just seems like I'm dealing with so many different things, and then the timeframe should come up. And so, but I wanted to talk to you because when I, when I came to talk to all employees when I first started, pay, of course, was always on everyone's mind. It's, it's a concern. It's an issue. And then over the last couple of months, I've seen some of their concerns, and I've seen some of their issues. And I've talked to some of you about this as well. What I also did was take a survey of the surrounding areas, counties, towns, municipalities, and private services that offer emergency medical services. So we're almost comparing an apple on an apple for the most part instead of an apple with orange. But there are very different factors, which I laid out in the email that I sent you there with the different pay ranges here. Part of increasing the pay will help us become more attractive. Will help us get more potential employees. Right now, we have, I would say, a very minimum staffing level. We have six part-time medics, which two of those part-time medics actually work a fair amount of time. The rest of them work somewhat a little bit, and there's a few that work the bare minimum. While it is easy to say we could hire more part-time people, unfortunately, in my view, this job is not a part-time job. It can be, but it's a very difficult job to staff. Then you add in a pandemic like we're in right now, and we add in a variety of different factors from where we live, surrounding areas. It all becomes a difficult factor to manage. Part-time staff for, like Walmart, for instance, is easily flexible. They can move somebody for training, the requirements. The cost to hire someone is not as great as it is for us. When we talk about uniforms, we talk about training, we talk about different things that we have to do for these employees. These costs begin to rise and rise. And then we have a limited budget. So having a robust part-time list has its pros and its cons. The biggest pro for you all is benefits. And benefits is a big driver of the cost. And I completely understand that. And like I talked to you many times, many of you before, I don't want to come up here and just ask for everything just because I think we need it or we need it. I'm trying to be very fiscally responsible with what I ask for and when I ask for it as well. And so when I keep, when I started putting this together and started looking at things, I saw that there is a need to bring the rate up, and which I outlined to all of you in the spreadsheet that I gave you there is the, is the pay levels that I was looking at for each one of these employees. Now, yes, this is above your proposed increase that you initially laid out for everyone, but I also think that it is well needed. It will help us retain. It will help us attract, and it will help us grow as a department as well. The next step is holiday time. Holiday time, vacation time, all that, basically, holiday time is a very difficult thing to manage. It's even more difficult because we have three people. And when you have back-to-back holidays or you have people that want to have time off, it is, it is hard to get people to work, especially on a holiday. And it's especially even harder trying to get a part-time. So as I tried to move into changing things up as we move into the new year, one of the thoughts was allowing us to have holiday pay for holidays for our part-time staff. This would allow me the flexibility to require the staff to, number one, work holidays and work certain holidays out of the year. They would be choosing those holidays just as much and divvying it out to the whole department instead of relying on three individuals to cover every holiday within the year. Now, there are some holidays that is never a problem, and people will pick it up. But as things change and as people's lives change, some holidays become harder and harder. And that's what leads to the five big holidays of every year, which you pretty much all know what those holidays are. And some of those holidays, or the majority of those holidays, fall back-to-back. And so then we start looking at three people. And so then we start looking at three people trying to cover four spots in two days, and then you have to start taking away holidays from people. And how do you keep those people there when your full-time people are working just basically every holiday because A, we have no requirement for holiday, and B, there's no benefit for a part-timer to even work a holiday? And so part-timers are great, but part-timers also come mainly from another job. And so their other job has requirements. So it is a risk to do the requirement for holidays, but I also think it's, it will be a calculated risk. We may lose a couple, we may, we may lose none. But also, as we move more people in, they will also know that going in. So your older ones may say, eh, it's not worth it anymore, I'm not going to work that much anymore. So it, it comes with respect, but as we get more people in, they will know coming in that this is, this is the way it is.
So this would say to the part-time staff, you're going to be required to work X number of holidays?
Yes, what, what I would do is I would base it into a major and a minor. And so if this gets approved, then I will lay it out between me and Scott, who takes care of the schedule. We've been throwing around some ideas to roll this out to be fair and adequate, fair to everybody, including the full-time staff, including myself here. No one's above working holidays, and so we will try our very best to, to make it work as best as possible. Yes, well, the full-timers probably work more holidays than the part-timers, yes. But at the end of the day, we have to, we have to fill the days that are open.
So right now, the part-time person, they get paid their normal wage?
They get paid their normal wage, and so there is no incentive. So yourself would say to me, Jeff, why would I want to work Christmas?
So if you're the full-time person, then you do get that part, part time and a half?
You do get that. And so they, they don't. And so then you're taking away, and then you're just adding more and more time to those people. So when I mentioned to a couple of you, does this, is this going to raise our overall cost? No. When I, when I figured in the budget here, I have a little bit of cushion in there to cover additional expenses, which I thought when I put this all together, do I anticipate an additional cost factor or additional appropriation at the end of the year? No. Is there anything that I can unforesee? There's, there's tons of things that we can unforesee. We have COVID, we have injuries, we have everything. And that is another reason why part-time staff becomes risky. If a part-time staff person is supposed to work tomorrow and they work at their other job, and their other job says, hey, I can't work tomorrow, I, I gotta, I'm getting mandatory to that job. There's no, we're, we're stuck on the hook and then we have to change it. If a part-timer falls and injures himself at another job, we're stuck with trying to fill that. If a part-timer at another job gets COVID, we have to cover it. All of these things become very, very risky when you're dealing with a part-time staff. The loyalty is there to a, to a, to a degree with our part-time staff because they have stepped up on many different occasions, but the loyalty is more there when we have full-time people. And so when you have full-time people, they're more loyal, and we have more flexibility to get them to work more hours if we need to, to cover open shifts. But part-timers, they, they say to us that they don't want work, there's nothing holding them there. And so those are the two things in regards to the hours and to the holiday pay. Is there any other questions?
Yeah, so Jeff, one of my questions was, it looks like when you're talking about the six part-timers, those are the six medics, right? Because there's other EMTs on here that are not medics?
We have six paramedics at a part-time, and we have 11 EMTs on our roster currently. And then just over a month, month and a half ago, I did a posting on Indeed for EMTs and paramedics, and I only got two people for EMTs. I had no paramedic applicants. I do have some, some people that I know within the industry that are interested, but interested and happy are two different things.
Rich? Yeah, Jeff, you said that there is no negative budget implication in the proposal. Are you talking about both proposals or just the holiday pay?
Holiday pay and changing the hourly rate will not, will not have a negative impact on the budget.
And Jeff, do you, I'm sorry if I was in the office. Did you say the exact amount and the change that you were talking about? Just, because I, I don't think I sent it to Marlene. I meant to before the meeting, and I'm sorry, I didn't get it to her.
Exact change and?
That what we had proposed, I think the maximum now is thirteen fifty for a part-time EMT, right? And what you were suggesting for next year was fifteen dollars?
Yes, fifteen. What it also does is it establishes also where starting rate would be. And so the EMT would start off at fourteen for a brand-new EMT that would start here in Culver. It would start off at fourteen, and after six months, and I would also put the amount of hours on there. I don't want to have someone hire in and then we don't see him for, we see him for a month and we don't see him for five months, and they're like, yeah, I got pay raises now. It'd be more based upon some hours, and we could, I could add some more language to that to reach a threshold before that did change. And then they would go to the, the starting wage of the fifteen. Medic would be the same way, they would start off at seventeen and then go to eighteen. And so that's how that structure would be as well, is that once they were here, and that's what I have on there, six months, but we can also structure it to the amount of hours that are worked as well. But when I looked at six months and looked at it as a healthy amount of time that they could work during that time. Part of that also is with the holiday pay, I plan on restructuring the requirements to work. Right now, they're only required to work, per the, per the policies, is twelve hours every two months. Twelve hours is nothing. And so we have, we have several employees that, that's what happens, is just the twelve hours. And so then that becomes a, a very enormous strain on other people within the department, our full-time staff, because they're not picking up their load. So like right now, we are one-third covering our monthly, monthly time with full-time, and two-thirds is being covered by part-time. But then the part-time, the full-time and other related part-time people are covering up that two-thirds that not everyone is equally taking up.
So is there a lot of, are you saying there's a lot of overtime then?
We, we've had several times where we've had, we've had overtime, and that's where getting the rate up, getting the holiday pay in there and doing the one final piece that I'll talk about is going to help the budget, and it's going to keep the budget within a normal operating range, which I'm saying is within that salary budget that we established at the, in September here, to get that in line. But there's other factors that we can't control. We can't control COVID, we can't control people being off, we can't control those additional costs, we can't control injuries, and we can't control other related things that they're off. You know, those are all things that I have put into the, the salary amount, but those, those things aren't high on the amount of coverage that's in there dollar-wise. Now, like I said, do I feel confident? Yes, I feel confident that it's going to be able to be contained, and we're not going to have to come back for additional appropriation with those two, with those two lines. And it will actually help sustain us and help us grow in a way also.
I guess that was my question was, I was looking for the last EMS budget, because I know we went through a couple of them during budget time, to try to compare and looking at the salary ordinance.
We roughly went up from last, this, this year to next year, roughly about, I want to say, like thirty-six thousand, the salaries. Don't hold me to that, but I want, we went through so many different revisions, and I'm sorry, I don't have the exact amount. And that is because we did have some things figured in there as part of it. And so once I figured it in there, I was able to figure that all out.
Okay.
I can tell you what it was. We went up about forty-four thousand between last year and this year.
I guess my other question is a general one in that, okay, let's say we adjust the salary ordinance to reflect these changes, we don't necessarily have to make the changes of approving each person's salary. Because I think my gut reaction was, I really need to absorb this more and have a deeper dive into the conversation, like a work session. Because even though I, you've outlined everything here, I need have everything from a, okay, where were these rates yesterday? I can open the latest salary ordinance and do a compare, so I can see some changes. And I also know there's some built-in padding maybe on that salary ordinance. If you were reducing overtime and increasing the number of part-time hours covered, you would stay within, you wouldn't have to do an appropriation. But I guess for me to feel confident that's actually going to be the case and that this is going to incentivize part-time people to work more, there's part, I, I guess I need evidence of that in, in some respects, and need to understand it better than I do right now. I think I'm following your logic, but I know you had at the end of this proposing for another full-time person. That would definitely put us over. I don't see how we could stay within budget. Just paying the benefits alone would put us over everything.
And that's where, that was my final piece, is that is the only thing that would cause for an additional appropriation.
Okay.
If you're ready.
I'm glad you see that.
Like I said, I wouldn't be asking any of this if I didn't think it was fiscally responsible and I didn't think that it was unjustified. I'm not about just adding full-time staff. I'm finishing up a five-year plan that I have, outlining every year, what the budget should look like, what the adjustments should be, and, and right now it's trending at like a two to a three percent increase each year, more in line with where we're normally at. I know this year, next year, it was a bigger chunk. But looking at that and looking at some of the different needs and looking at some of the different areas and cost projections, I felt with the five-year plan that I'm going to share with all of you once I get it all finished up here, so you can kind of see where I'm thinking at over the next five years. And so it gives you some understanding as a, as a fiscal board that, you know, we're not just doing this day-by-day, by the fly, is that we can kind of stick to it and kind of look at it and objectively look at it over the years and see how we're doing, so we can plan as best as we possibly can.
Yeah, from a, from a policy standpoint, I don't have an issue with, with the holiday requirement and paying time and a half for a holiday, whether you're part-time or full-time, that, I have no issue with that. Because I can see wanting to incentivize someone to do it, particularly so that full-time people actually do get time off. And if some of our full-time people have been putting in long hours, then, you know, you'd like to think they could get a holiday. And I would be curious to see the surrounding data and the market. You know, what's Clement and, and Bremen and Bourbon and so on paying their EMTs?
I can break that all down for you, and I put it in a general form here, but I can definitely break that down.
Yeah, I mean, just more of a, like, we could walk through it, through a work session. From a standpoint of the salary ordinance, I know we're, our, our last time to vote on that is at the next meeting. And so I think in some ways, what, what you're asking is can we approve what's here to be reflected in that salary ordinance? Because right now, these numbers are not reflected there.
And we're updating the holiday pay and just that whole policy. So which is kind of why I'm, you know, I'm, I'm fine if we just want to wait another meeting before we, you know, so we have some time to, to make the changes and make them the way that we want them to be. Run it and do them quickly and then, you know, come after the first of the year, oh, we need to amend it again.
Yeah.
But the salary, you know, so we can make those changes, you know, over the next two weeks, and you can vote on it, and we'll be fine. We could also amend it after the first of the year. But just, just for some reference, when you look at the claims that I provide you on the very last page, I list out payroll, and I list out how many hours each department has worked, plus their overtime and then the total cost. So the week payroll that was put out on the twenty-seventh of, of November, the EMS had seven hundred and seventy-seven point five hours of regular pay and then a hundred and eleven hours of overtime.
Is that pretty typical from what?
No, it's actually, it's actually above.
Well, actually, so this week you had a hundred and thirty hours of overtime. So, and this, just to give you an idea, and, and where to look. I mean, going forward, y'all can look at the, at the, that last sheet of the claims for me, you can see how much time of overtime. So granted, it's, you know, these are the two that I have.
No, no, that's what, I went back the whole year and I looked at different, there are tremendous amounts of overtime, and that's what I'm trying to reduce.
Yeah.
And it's the same thing with like me working overtime. We all know what my rate is, so even with my rate, it's even more, it's even more of a dollar than it is everyone else. And so, yes, do I try to get the part-timers in here to do it? Yes, that's the great thing about part-timers, but at the end of the day, we're, we're just not getting them in the door every day that we possibly can. And the, the next thing is about, about the, the starting wages, is that even the private sector, and I'm not talking EMS practice, I'm talking Walmart, I'm talking McDonald's, I'm talking to them. People that were never in that fifteen-dollar-an-hour range, even in this area here, and it's slowly migrating to this area here, Walmart and some of these areas, they're starting off twelve, thirteen, fourteen dollars an hour. And so, or you go to the hospitals and you start at some of these same entry levels. And how do we compete against that when people go there? The next thing is, one of, one of EMT medical school, you started as an EMT twenty-eight years ago. I went to school for six months, and I was done, I was out the door and I was on an ambulance. Now, that's six months is almost a year. And you're, you're going to an accredited school most of the time and walking out with some college credits in some cases. But then you get to the paramedic level. The paramedic level used to be you were done in nine months. Now, it is, you know, anywhere between eighteen and twenty-four. The amount of hours that you're putting in is almost triple, to quadruple the amount of time you came in. And then they're going to school at an accredited place, whether it's IB Tech or in some of the hospital institutions. And then they're going, I got a bachelor's degree, I can just go get my, my OPN, and then maybe I can go get my R. And so it opens other doors for them that we compete. Now, like I said, the state's trying to address that, but there again, it's becoming harder and harder. The state of Indiana right now has roughly about forty-five hundred paramedics, licensed paramedics in the state. And we're a state of over six million people, and we only have forty-five hundred paramedics. The EMTs right now, I think it's right around nineteen, twenty thousand within the state. These numbers are, are low, these numbers are hard, I mean, so it's that much harder. And unfortunately, in the business that we have, everyone's chasing the dollar. I mean, so we could raise it, we could raise it tomorrow, and there's going to be someone that's going to raise it even more. And it's, it's, it's getting harder and harder in public safety. We see that in law enforcement, we see that in EMS, we see that in fire. Everyone is chasing, chasing that dollar, and it's becoming harder and harder to accept. And, you know, are we going to be able to beat them for a very premium wage? We're, you know, but we can track them with other things, like I talked about before, we talked about in the budget hearings. There are ways that we can track them and, and to get them and keep them here. But we have to do it in a calculated way in a sense, like you even talked about, Virginia, is that we have to look at it, you know, long-term and not just at the short-term. And that's what I'm trying to do, is I'm trying to get a good foundation started here that we can build upon. And these, these men and women, the training that they have to do every two years is enormous. And the amount of requirements that they have to have between a hospital that we serve under and within the state guidelines is increasing all the time. And most of that, most of that training, they have to get on their own, you know. We provide a series of training, but there are some things that are just outside of our realm that we can do, and they have to go somewhere else to get that as well. And so, you know, we want to have the, the best and brightest individuals that we can. And so doing this is a good step for us. And I really urge you, you know, when you post a work session, I have no problem with that. And like I said at the beginning, I'm, I'm sorry that it took me to this time, but.
Well, I know Jonathan and I were going to talk to the council about possibly doing a work session a week from today to have Cheryl come back for the economic development. to have Cheryl come back for the economic development walkthrough with just the town council. I think time wise, we're looking at an hour or so for that, you think? So I'm wondering, are you guys open to a long work session to get into this? And would, Marlene, would you be available? Because I would like to look at that overtime situation and give Karen enough time to put together some data. Because if overtime equates to a full time person or three part time people, that if you raised that rate and you killed the overtime, would we actually save money? That sort of data, what you're getting at here is really important, but I think we need to take some time to digest it and work our way through it. Would you all be open to having a work session following the one with Cheryl that Jonathan and I are proposing for a week from today?
I'm thinking. I'm thinking the proposal on the overtime for the holidays to me is the, I don't want to say a no brainer. I'm really too much to question about that. It makes sense to me. It will affect people's work those holidays, therefore reducing your overtime for your full time people who are going to do more on a monthly basis. So that one seems pretty straightforward, I think. In talking to Karen about it. And so Jeff is saying there's a little bit of language that needs to be buffed for policies and things like that. So I mean, I would be, I guess I would suggest we defer voting on the ordinance tonight until the 22nd and we're kind of getting the language for the.
Holiday pay.
The holiday pay worked out. And then do the work session as you suggest and allow Karen and Jeff to put their heads together and turn and do a projection like she did when we did the salary budget to begin with. On, okay, so what's the bottom line going to be on this? I mean, I respect Jeff, what you were saying about, you know, it's going to be budget neutral. I think that's pretty obvious on the holiday pay. On the other one, with raising the rates and everything, I'd like to see the data played out a little more.
And as long as you're bringing up the language and the policy, it's probably worth our time to look at, do we have a policy for the police department who also hires part time officers with holiday pay? Do they get time and a half if they're part time? I think we'd want to be consistent across departments. Not that we have a whole lot of part time working for the street department or the sewer department who would come on for a holiday. Because usually if they have to come on for a holiday, it's an emergency. Whereas police and EMS, it's a requirement that we have emergency service available. So probably worth our time to look at how this would apply to the police department as well. Because I'd like to have the same policy for the police department, you know. I think Wayne has worked every Thanksgiving that I've been on the town council. But if a part time person wanted to work it for time and a half pay, sure would be nice for Wayne to have Thanksgiving off, you know. And I think that's the case you're making here, Jeff. And I think it's a good case. But I could also understand why a part timer wouldn't want to unless they were incentivized to do it.
I know when we started paying part time that worked in my department, I think that was the first Thanksgiving and Christmas I had off in maybe 25 years.
Yep. I remember you did that a lot, Sally, as a volunteer.
Yeah.
So back to the work session now. Would you all be, would you like to go ahead and work session some of this? And is a week long enough for you guys to prepare to have a work session? I know Jeff, you've done a lot of homework already. So maybe it's a matter of distilling some of it into charts and things that we can compare the apples to oranges, if you will, and have a deeper dive on this.
How much data do you want? I'm kind of a lengthy kind of guy, so.
I think putting this chart that was in the document next to the salary ordinance first. Something about the impact this could potentially have on the current budget that was approved. Because you're making the case it shouldn't affect it unless we go with that full time person. But then also some sort of study of the overtime occurring. And do we have ample evidence to show that if we increase these rates, we will get coverage on that overtime to lower the amount of overtime, which would actually probably save us funds over the course of the year? But yeah, for me, that's some of the data I want to look at more closely, I think. Anyone else?
I'm concerned about combining the two in one work session. I think it's not opposed to a lively meeting or working. But I think that this is going to be a pretty in-depth discussion. I would suggest, I mean, it's not going to be this.
Like a separate night?
That I would suggest we do it on a separate night. And the question becomes in terms of priorities, urgencies, is this more urgent to coordinate with the salary ordinance and then for the first of the year for the economic development?
What do you think Cheryl would be open to that, I would imagine?
I think she would, I think.
Yeah. We could do that.
I'm fine with if you wanted to wait until right after the first of the year. I mean, if you wanted us to take some time to put this together.
Well, I think if we were going to make a change though to the salary ordinance, it's easier to do it now, right?
We either do it all at one time or we'll do an amendment and then you just kind of have to make sure to refer that.
Because the last thing I want to do to any one of you is feel like I'm rushing this down you. And I was just given a short window that I pretty much thought was out. And so I threw out this net to see how many of I can catch you here. And I'm willing to put as much effort and much data into this. So you are getting this at, with the most information that you possibly can out of this.
Well, let's go ahead. I think we'll go with your suggestion, Rich. Let's defer the economic development meeting. Let's put that off till after the first of the year. Let's address this next week in a work session. If, are you available, Marlene? Okay. And at least start with a week from today. We can always schedule another one before the regular meeting if we want to keep coming back to it. But I think we should probably plan for a fairly long work session.
Jenny, I'm unavailable next Tuesday because that's five morning meetings.
Okay. Would Wednesday work for everybody? I don't want to, I prefer to have all five of us.
You prefer what?
To have all of us. I don't want to schedule it when you knowingly can't make it bill.
What about the next day?
Wednesday? Does that work for everyone? Marlene, does that look okay for you?
What would be the date on the 16th?
December 16th.
I think I could.
Yeah, I have something on the 17th, but not the 16th. All right, let's advertise for the 16th.
At what time?
What's the preference of Jonathan and Karen and Jeff? You guys put in full days. You want to do it at four?
Four, it works.
Yeah.
Doesn't matter to me.
Does that, is that quicken up? Four o'clock work bill for your school schedule? Four o'clock, everyone?
Four o'clock, it's fine.
Sounds good.
All right, let's plan on four for now, okay? I can leave work an hour early, that's not a big deal. All right, thank you for the time, Jeff.
No, thank you for taking the time to listen.
We will see you again next Wednesday on that. So I'm going to skip down to the stellar plan update for Culver Stellar from our town manager here.
Endot will be accepting bids for our State Road 10 sidewalk and West Jefferson Gateway projects on January 13th. So those two projects have been combined into one for bidding purposes. And the contract documents and plan sheets will be available for any interested contractors to view on the Endot website beginning December 16th.
Great.
And that is all I have for Stella.
Great, you're getting there. Town managers report. I'm hoping Jonathan will end this report with a bit of good news we learned about.
Yeah, I have some notes I had to add today. Utilities staff will be wrapping up leaf collection next week. If residents have leaves after that date, they can still bring them to the street garage themselves. Note that the, I believe the name of the event's the Mutt's Truck, which was a fundraiser for Marshall County Humane Society that was presented to us several weeks ago that did get an okay from the Marshall County Health Department. And we had okayed it, but it was kind of before the state guidelines had come into effect. So it does look like that's going to move forward on the 12th. Oh, Cheryl Morphew, which we had mentioned. So it sounds like we'll move that to maybe January, her follow up presentation. But one of the things she had mentioned was possibly starting a residential TIF. And I think I had shared with you in the past that I didn't think we would meet the threshold based on the number of, basically because of the Maple Ridge development, the number of new homes that came in out there. But after Cheryl's discussion, I went back and looked through some of the language and there's a little bit of room for interpretation on what exactly is residential single family housing. And long story short, we may qualify. So been putting together some information with the county and we'll go back to DLGF makes that actual determination as to whether or not you're eligible. And they have a worksheet and some information from the county I can collect and send to them and they can tell us, yes, you can actually move forward with this or not. So they have a limit on, if you had more than 3% of the single family homes in your city or town have been built in the last three years, you're basically not eligible. So if we had 30 new homes at Maple Ridge, we wouldn't have been eligible. So that was a concern, but, so just let you know that that's going on and I'll update you once I have all that information from the county. And thanks to Cheryl, she's already generating some good ideas, hopefully. Update on 709 Abyspo Street. We do have that demolition order that goes into effect on the 11th. I posted specifications and have started to try to get quotes to open at the next council meeting. And then the last I drove by, the siding had been taken off as they had told Jim that they would do to inspect it. And then I was told today that there may be a dumpster out there that they may have actually started their renovations. So I'll follow up on that with Chuck Duett and we'll see if we can get him in the building to know what's going on. If they have made some progress on the actual work, we may want to just kind of walk away from that and not accept any of the bids. I see Jim unmuted. Jim, did you have something on that?
Well, I was just going to comment. They were supposed to let me know if they were either demolish or try to renovate. So I, if they have started something like that, they have not told me that.
Okay. Yeah, I had tried to call as well and I didn't get anything back from them.
Okay. Well, I might try to follow up on that then.
Okay, great.
Have they actually filed plans for a permit?
So one of the conditions of us not seeking the demolition a year ago was that they applied for the building permit. So that building permit was actually applied for almost a year ago.
And was issued?
Yes, yes.
And they're typically good for two years, I think, right?
And then another item that's, again, kind of like what we talked about in the past, it's within what I could approve, but I just wanted to let everyone know there is some additional CARES Act money for COVID related safety awareness. And I have talked to Carrie Langdon Martin of Red Door Marketing in Plymouth about doing some social media posts and boosting those. And so I have a proposal from her. And I don't know if I sent that out to you all. Her total, it's under $1,000 for the work. But it would just be a series of posts between now and the end of the year to try and, again, encourage people to be safe and be healthy during this outbreak. Is there any questions on that one?
No.
Okay. Good news. Two grants, actually, I think since the last time we've met. The MACOG slash IEDM charging station. So MACOG put together that grant and it was awarded by IEDM. So the town of Culver will have one of the charging stations. There's, I think, nine in our region coming in next year. And then today, Endot announced their community crossing matching grants for the second round and Culver received, I believe it was $221,019.24.
Yay!
Which is everything we asked for, so, yes. Very happy with that.
The whole shebang that they applied for.
Yeah. So that was sections of Lakeview, Miami, Lincoln, Clark, West Terrace Fleet, West Shore, Lewis White, Marmo and Lake Shore. Most of them pretty small sections, as well as a crack seal on the north end.
We see you clapping, Jim.
Thank you, Jim.
That's huge. Is that like the third one in a row they've done with us?
I think they said on the call today that everyone who applied did receive something this round.
That's great.
That was great.
Makes our paving dollars go a lot further.
Yes, it does. And that's all I have for you. If there's any questions?
Thank you, Jonathan. Any questions for Jonathan? How about that grant? Get some roads paved. Sorry for my excitement. I've got to get excited about things in a time of. Okay, department reports. I know we heard from you, Jeff, but anything else to report for the EMS?
No.
All right, thank you. It's okay if there is. Is anyone on for the fire department? I think I see Pete Peterson's name on the online call.
I am here pitch hitting for Ken. Very little to report. Our tanker is currently out of service and is at Hoosier Fire in Valparaiso getting repairs down the seals on the pump. This was a pre-approved expense by the council. So just a matter of getting that back as expeditiously as we can. Also, TCS is scheduling this Friday to come in and apply the pavement lines for the area ladder truck. This helps the entry and exiting of the building to prevent any, hopefully any accidents we should have as far as, you know, it's a tight space. This also was a pre-approved by the council. And I guess, I guess one, I guess a comment to make before I leave is the volunteers of the Culver Union Township Fire Department are honored to work all holidays and to protect our residents.
Thank you, Pete. Let's see, police department, is Wayne on the call today? Don't think I see Wayne's name. Is Amber on the call? I feel like I see your name up there, Amber.
I'm on the call. Can you hear me?
What's up, Amber? Yeah?
No update from me, thank you.
Okay, thanks, Amber. Is Bob on the call? Well, is Bob know the good news about the community crossing grant?
Yes, he does.
Good. All right, anyone from Plan Commission reporting or BZA? So we will move on to the redevelopment commission report.
Our next meeting is Monday, the 21st. Five o'clock, the virtual meeting.
Okay. Tree Commission, is anyone on the call from the tree mission? I don't think so. So let's go to clerk's report.
I just have two claims over 2,000 for your approval. Speaking of the tree commission, Hooters Tree Service for $5,900 and that was for the removal of the number of the trees around town. And then Motorola Solutions for $3,008.12 for the EMS radios.
Okay. Motion to approve the claims over 1,500, 2,000 rather. All in favor?
Aye.
I emailed you all earlier. We had an application for a sewer fee forgiveness for 761 acres away. And the amount that Julie figured out was $327.74. There was a water heater that was leaking a fair, good amount of water and the homeowners are not, were not present, so. Our utilities took care of turning up the water.
Motion to approve?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Then being the end of the year and seeing 2021 on the horizon, we have a couple of open board and commission seats, actually just commission seats. There's five redevelopment seats available. And then there will be two open seats on the tree commission. But those terms are off. So they expire in August, at the end of August. So we'll, if it's okay, we'll just go ahead and advertise all of the seven positions. And then hopefully get the two tree commissions in place and they can just continue on. But if you're okay with it, I would propose taking the applications through Friday, January 8. And I will send out the applications via Town God Lake and put information on Facebook and have the actual application also on our website.
Sounds good.
Yes.
Good question about those. Following up with our ethics workshop, did we want to or what we vibes of all the, we have a conflict of interest statement for those board members?
On the application or are you thinking the, the?
The conflict of interest statement that people are actually going to?
Yeah, for when they sign and get their swear in. I think we'd have to come up with some language to have council approve that first.
You do approve, so when, when the council and the redevelopment commission do that, that statement that you, what the name is, but it's a conflict of interest statement saying that, you know, how do you procure any, key or interest anywhere? That actually does come, is presented by, to the council. So, and then you all approve it. So you are made aware of those items.
Yeah, I think what Rich is getting at is do we want to add a conduct code, ethics code of conduct to that? Is that kind of what you're getting at?
Yes.
As we talked about it at the?
We also talked about doing something that looks consistent with what we do with, I think, staff in terms of having people sign a statement. Besides just the, the conflict of interest statement, they sign some type of, I forget what we said exactly. But I think those are the two things we talked about. Besides the pecuniary, because of the fiduciary or fiscal interest, if there were other board memberships in it.
I think we were going to look at the language of trying to do that.
I think we're going to.
Yeah, we were going to have a follow-up to it. Cause we got, yeah, we got kind of in the weeds on it. And I do think we were going to look, I think we were also going to look at the policy handbook or something to see what it says about our employees. And I can't remember.
Yeah, we talked about that.
Sorry, it wasn't that long ago, but feels like it was a year ago.
That's fine. I just thought we were advertising or putting things out of documents. So we needed to update that information. It would be good to tell people that.
Yeah, during appointment time. Maybe we can get something drafted before the next meeting or at least look at something. But we might have to do it after the first of the year. I wouldn't mind working on that and just maybe reaching out to you guys even one-on-one, what that might say and look like. So I don't want to totally put that on Jonathan's plate either because it kind of involves us as elected officials too. And that's kind of awkward.
I know I took some notes that meeting, so.
Yeah. I'll follow up with Jonathan and we'll get back to you guys. I'm sorry, back to you Karen.
I'm sorry, I have a couple more things, not the short report like it was last week. The park budget, I would like to propose moving the costs of the audiovisual equipment that was purchased with the park budget money to the clerk's budget. Because mainly we've been using audiovisual equipment and Amber needs to move her budget to get up through the end of the year. So I'm proposing transferring $7,075.18 from the beach, from the park, from the park budget over to the clerk's budget.
You mean vice versa, clerk to park?
To clerk, no, park to clerk.
The expense.
Oh, the expense of it. Okay. I thought you meant like give her the money to make up the expense that she paid for.
At the end of the day, that's what's happening.
Yeah, totally follow you. Motion to approve?
I would move that we transfer the cost for the the internet services and the projection services and leading services from the park to the clerk, the amount of this $7,000.
$7,075.18.
Do I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Just as a couple of, just informational, Wayne has given me a list of the holidays, vacation days and personal days that he, Chad and Alex are not going to be able to take between now and the end of the year. So I'm going to go ahead and pay those out next week. So it's just as a separate payroll in between our usual payrolls. I did get the 1782 notice for the 2021 budget. I reviewed that and it is, was as I requested. So that was a huge relief. And so now we just wait for the final budget approval and that should be coming before the end of the year. And then just a reminder, you have the proposal from, from Baker Tilly in the Modern Super Race Study. So I just kind of sit in there whenever you're ready to move on that. And that's all I have.
Okay. Thank you, Karen. We'll move on to the attorney's report.
Thank you, rather short. The foreclosure at 415 Lake Shore is set for January 26th at 1:00 PM. I think I reported that at the last meeting and you may have seen it already published one time in the Pilot News. It should be in the Culver paper and Pilot, continuing things. And kind of a point of interest on the same, and about the same time, the 614 College Avenue property is, has been foreclosed on by the Huntington Bank at 415 Lake Shore. I think that Huntington Bank judgment probably exceeds the value of the 614 College Avenue property. But we, we may very well be collecting our liens on 614 that day or shortly thereafter as well. So interesting kind of twist that two related properties, they're actually both in the name of 27 Group Inc., are foreclosed on in the same day. So all I have, unless anybody has questions.
Thank you, Jim. Hey, Jim, for the final meeting of the year, would you mind bringing in a contract for next year? So we can talk, you end up working with us again?
No, I'd be happy to do so at, what, $1,000 an hour, something like that? No, I'll get one to you ahead of time.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
On the agenda. Anyone got a utility shut-off or ordinance violation that may be on the phone tonight? Cause there's no one in the room with one, I don't believe. Okay. We'll move to citizen input. And though we have citizens in the room that are on the council and, and our township, we will see if there's any citizen input from the telephone.
Got it?
Yes, go ahead.
Russ, you're on mute. Can you unmute yourself?
Russ, you're muted. We can't hear you.
I assume we're going to continue these virtual meetings for a while. You're going to have to improve the audio. I couldn't understand anything that Rich West said tonight because of the, the audio coming through. And I didn't hear from any other council members. So I don't know if I could have heard them or not. But it's imperative that the citizens be able to hear all the conversation. So I'd ask that Jonathan look into doing something to improve that audio. Maybe everybody needs a mic. I don't know. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Russ. We did have one mic down tonight that, the mic that was placed by Bill Clevinger and Bill Giffens. There is one by Rich, but maybe it was muffled. So we will definitely check into that, Russ, and see what we can do. Thanks for letting us know. Is anyone else on the phone call that would like to do citizen input? You can unmute yourself if you are. Okay, thank you.
Can I unmute myself?
Yes, you can. Please do.
We never tried to.
Yeah, really, yeah, try that. I just want to tell you what's going on in my world right now. And Jonathan and Karen obviously already know. But this weekend is, we do our Christmas baskets for Culver community. This year, we have 148 households that we're going to be taking food and gifts to. About 53 or 54 of those are senior citizens or families without children. The rest of them all have children. The community has been unbelievably generous. We have 233 children that we have gotten gifts for. And we have all of those kids covered. And they have come from all over, the Kiwanis, the churches, all of the churches. The academy took 43 kids this year. Different dorms and the hockey team and, you know, different groups. So the academy took 43 kids. You know, individuals, we put them on Town God Lake and just got call after call saying, I'll take one kid, I'll take a family, I'll take two families, you know. My grocery bill is going to be close to $15,000 this year.
Wow.
Friday, we're doing the food. We pick up the food on Friday. I pick up the gifts at the academy tomorrow. We pick up the food on Friday. And the kids at school will unload. And we're going to be making up baskets in the cafeteria. We're making baskets. And we have a limited amount of kids that are going to help us this year. And obviously we can't have as many people as we did last year because that's way too many people. Jonathan and Karen have volunteered to help us. But, you know, it may take us longer to do it. But to stay, stay safe, we're doing it with less people. Putting it in the cafeteria so we can spread out. On Sunday then, we'll be making our deliveries. I have also worked with the, the Culver Fire Department. It's coming at 12:30 to load their things. Then the EMTs and the Police Department will be there at, no, I'm sorry. Monterey and Lyric Ford will be there at 1:00. And EMTs and the Police Department will be there at 1:30. And then Bass Lake Fire Department is coming to help this year with the Stark County North Bend Township deliveries. So they're coming at 2:00, which would be 1:00 their time, but it'd be 2:00 ours. And by that time, groups will be coming back after their second loads. But that'll scatter out the people that are going to make the, make the deliveries as well. So anybody that must be there and see what's going on. And thank everybody that helped because it's been a huge undertaking this year and this community is amazing.
That's tremendous.
It's amazing.
Yeah. Well, thank you for organizing all of that with your team, Marlene. I listened to someone tell me about it this year who literally cried about the kindness in your heart and telling me how much they love working with you. So thank you from the bottom of our hearts.
It's my 21st year. I think it's time to retire. Nobody ever says, nobody ever says, oh, I'll take over. But, but, you know, I love it. It's especially in this community. You know, if there's a need, this community steps up. It's just, and you never have trouble getting help. This year has been the most challenging of any year, I think. But, but because of the COVID, not, not because of the, the help or anything else. It's, the help is there, it's just trying to stagger it and, and saying, well, you can help here, you can't help here, you can, you know. Because I, I've limited it to how many people I can have in there. But, but it's been, it's a wonderful project.
It's terrific.
Thank you all for, for bringing us.
Thank you for doing that.
Yeah.
And Jennifer, I assume they've talked with you as well, some of your EMTs will be there?
I don't care about it.
We appreciate it.
Well, thanks for that bit of good news from citizen input. It's nice to have good, positive citizen input. Council issues, any council issues, Bill Clevinger?
None.
Bill Giffens?
Just to let everybody know that Judy Stone has resigned as president of the county council. And there will be a caucus this Friday at 5:00 PM at the Republican headquarters to fill that position. And those people that were interested. Judy was in District Four, which is basically Plymouth. And people had to throw their hats in the ring by 5:00 to 5:00 this afternoon. It'd be at the caucus on Friday at 5:00.
Thank you, Bill. Council issues, Rich?
Nothing.
Sally, council issues?
No.
All right, motion to adjourn to claims?
Zillu.
Zillu.
All in favor? Boy, everyone jumps to second that one.
Bye, Jonathan. Bye, council.
Bye, guys.
See you in two weeks.
Okay.
Thank you.